I think we are ready to go.
Okay. Listen a different, yes. Okay, okay, thank you. Call to order, the regular virtual meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call please.
Mayor Garnes?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Woodall?
Here.
City Manager Knop?
Here.
Chief of Police Connor?
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham?
Here.
Community Development Director Caldwell? Water Superintendent Jensen?
Here.
排水 superintendent Taylor?
Here.
And City Clerk Dunham is present, thank you.
Thank you. We had our closed session and in our closed session, we did the city manager evaluation. I will now stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Are there any hands raised or emails?
There are currently no hands raised.
I do have one email.
Would you read it?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to address the city manager along with the recent appointed ad hoc committee regarding the purchase of the new city trash receptacles. Although this may seem like a simple task, it is an important one in my opinion considering the costly investment and the overall aesthetic appeal for our community. The two current, the current two can future is not effective, nor is the overabundance of the placement of them in different areas throughout the city, which I have personally found that there is little use and in some cases only chronic abuses. The current budget for these replacements is more than sufficient to allow for an upgrade in quality with a more pleasing aesthetic style for our community. By limiting the number of receptacles we purchase, even with an upgrade, I believe it is only, it is not only fiscally responsible, but will be an added visual improvement. Sincerely, Cindy Treadwell. And that's the only message received.
Thank you. Um, are we all still here? I just need a, my, my screen went blank. I'm not sure exactly what's happening.
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Okay.
I think somebody-
I can see you.
I think somebody pressed, uh, screen share.
Okay.
Rosa, I think you accidentally hit screen share.
Okay, well, we're back now. I'm back anyway, so. Thank you, um, Karen, thank you. Um, as my, my hat, as a public, as a citizen, as citizen Garnes, um, I just want to thank the chamber, thank Nick Angeloff for the flag display, for the banner display. It was all very lovely. It makes our town look very good and festive and it's just really appreciated, so. I just wanted to, that's, that's my public comment without my mayor hat on. Thank you. And now we will go to the consent calendar. Is there, are there any items that council would like to remove from the consent calendar?
I, I would like to remove item seven.
Okay. Anyone else? No, hearing none? Are there, I'm sorry, Julie, did you want to remove something?
I was just gonna make a motion to approve one through six on the consent calendar.
Okay, I, I just needed to ask if there was any hands raised or any email that wanted to remove or staff, anything that needed to be removed from the consent calendar?
Oh, thank you.
We have no, no emails or hands raised, hearing none. I will then, um, we have a motion to approve items one through six. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garnes?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Councilmember Wilson, item seven.
Just a question, it, it says on that item that said on June the 7th, the city of Fortuna will, we'll be hearing this. So that doesn't involve us to be listening, but we'll be hearing it on, presented to us on the 15th?
Uh, correct, so, uh, Fortuna is kind of on the lead on this and so they'll be having their next meeting related to universal collection on the 7th. Uh, from there, we'll have a better idea of what the timeline would be moving forward. But originally, we did anticipate having a draft ordinance presented at today's council meeting and just situations outside of our control, um, that'll have to be pushed back.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Would you, um, propose a motion to approve item seven?
I make a motion that we approve item seven of the consent.
Is there a second?
Second by Johnson.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garnes?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Reports from staff, reports and staff communications, city manager. And that's page 73 in your packets.
Thank you, Mayor Garnes and members of the council. So our contractor for this year's, the summer's pave project began work today. They'll be out on Ogle over the next few days doing some prep work for the pave project. Uh, we are anticipating towards the second half of June for them to do the actual paving. Uh, in between now and then, they have to do quite a bit of prep work particularly related to drainage. Um, so they'll be working on that. Um, we do have the numbers for the Riedel community cleanup. They were about 80% less in tonnage and vehicle traffic from two years ago, the last time we did, uh, the, the cleanup. And with that, um, I will go ahead and turn it back to the mayor to see if there's any other questions for staff.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Uh, no comments, Mayor Garnes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Yes, excuse, uh, excuse me. Um, the vehicles, that's 133 vehicles participated or we cleaned up 133 vehicles?
Um, that's 133 vehicles participated.
Okay. I thought, wow, that's, that's a lot of vehicles together up. I believe that's the only question that I really have. The Tesla, are they, um, I have another question.
Go ahead.
On the Tes, on the Tesla, are they looking to hook that up here in the near future? All right, if this city are?
Yeah. Hopefully Derek is on the line and can give you the latest on that.
Yeah, we had a site visit with the electrical contractor and the civil contractors about a week ago. Their tentative start date is June 14th to do the, um, foundation and all the underground plumbing and stuff like that, so they'll have the majority of the work or the foundation work done by the, hopefully by the end of the week of the 14th, so two weeks from now.
The reason I'm asking is was that at RCA there was, uh, I believe it was the city of Ferndale said they ran into some kind of special wiring issue that when it came time to actually do the test, they had all their, you know, being able to shut power off and all the different things they were gonna do to test it. And when they went to test it, they were, there was something they were, that was deficient in their electrical system and they had to, they had to reschedule it to another date. You know, are you aware of that problem?
A couple of the concerns that they brought up for, for us was is that the, the switch over, it's gonna require about an eight hour period for them to shut down power to the plant. Uh, I think our specific situation and how the actual breakers are lined up, I think we'll be able to isolate from the main utility box and run the generator and isolate any utility power with the transfer switch. So it should be pretty seamless. They're gonna take another look at it, but, um, preliminarily, I think we're gonna be all right.
Okay, cuz I just, I might pass out. If it was Ferndale, I'm not sure who the other, there was another city that had some problem. But maybe if you give them a, you know, a call and make sure we're not missing some minor glitch.
I talked, I did talk to Fortuna and they had a similar situation where they needed to power down the entire plant and not run backup generators. Um, just basically by our tie-in between the utility and the plant itself. So they did, but they have, uh, a different layout. I, I, I'm pretty sure our, our situation is, um, pretty good for the, for the install. I don't think we'll be without power.
All right, just giving you heads up and, uh-
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Amazingly, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions for me either, thank you.
Thank you. And no questions for me, so we will thank staff for your update. Apparently it was pretty darn good this week, so we have a lot of questions, gee. So thank you for that. Um, we will now move on to special presentations. Page 81 in your packets, the presentation and possible adoption of fiscal year 21, 22 operating and capital budget. Approved resolution number 1490 dash 2021, adopting the fiscal year 2021, 22 operating and capital budget and position allocation table. And I will give that over to, I think Cheryl, through the city manager.
Right, um, there we go. Finally got it up. All right, so we'll go ahead and turn this over to Cheryl Dillingham, Riedel's finance director.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Okay, so this item starts on page 81 of your packet and basically the, the budget was brought before the council on May 18th. Since that time, there have been two very minor changes. We added $7,500 for engineering services to facilitate the Dinsmore water system upgrades and we deleted $10,000 from the police budget for digital storage that was purchased this fiscal year because the project has been completed and moved along faster than it was thought when the budget was being developed. And we can go to the next slide. And I will say, this is a, a pretty short presentation because nothing's really changed and we presented this not that long ago. So the budget changed from $5,671,694 to $5,669,000. One, 190, I just like to say these numbers cuz it's fun. Um, that did not change the percentage increase and the revenues did not change. And pretty much all the percentages and the ways that they were spread across the departments did, did not change with public works being 29% of the budget, um, capital projects being 24% of the budget, police being 19%, administrative services 15, debt service and payments nine, and community development 4%. Next slide. The general fund expenditures by service were slightly changed because the $10,000 that was removed from the police budget was 100% from the general fund, so that changed from, I believe, 904,450 to 895, 894,450. The police department makes up the largest part of the general fund budget with capital projects being the next largest expense and city manager, which did go up because we added the administrative analyst position, then finance, facilities and grounds, general government. And we can go to the next slide. Total revenues, these did not change. I'm just putting them up really quick because I did add one slide after this, but we're not going there just yet. So the city revenues had a 26% increase and mostly that was due to changes in the general fund and a lot of that was due to the sales tax revenue. So we can go to the next slide. Oh, wait, never mind. I've jumped ahead of myself. General revenues funds by type, so property, tax and lieu is our largest. Cannabis is our largest with property, tax and lieu being our second largest revenue source for the general fund. And if you combine the measure J sales tax and the Bradley Burns, which is just the standard sales tax, that is our largest, largest, um, single type of source of revenue, which is basically all items that are purchased for delivery within the city of Riedel that people pay sales tax on. And so the next slide, go there now, shows the city sales tax revenues because I wanted to go over a little bit that because of the pandemic, we had, I had reduced, to be really conservative, I had reduced the original budget for the current year below the budget from, from 1920. And as a result, the current estimated revenues that are coming into the city in the current year are $180,000 more than what we had budgeted. And that was an 8% increase over last year. And then when I did the budget for next year, I only included a 2% increase. So even though the revenues took a large, in, there's a large increase, it really is very subtle when you kind of look at it on this, on this, um, graph. And I just wanted to kind of make everybody feel comfortable that, that the estimates were reasonable and are actually still fairly conservative because I'm always, always wanna be the person who comes back with good news that revenues were higher than budgeted, not oops, they're lower. And then we can go to the next slide. And this slide goes over the priorities. At the last council meeting, the council selected code enforcement, economic development, cannabis expansion, staff, staff turnover reduction and SB 1383 as the priorities for 21, 22. This budget continues to fund a community service officer to perform code enforcement and there's $10,000 included for abatement activity. I will, I will say, under abatement activity, one of the things that's interesting about this is when activities are performed that will ultimately result in a lien, they don't actually come out of the budgeted funds, which is part of the reason it's been looking like we weren't spending money, but we have been. Um, economic development is the new fund that was created in 1920 and there's $77,000 budgeted in the upcoming year for a new administrative analyst position to spend time on that activity and $38,000 for beautification and revitalization projects. The budget includes money for cannabis expansion, $100,000 for upgrades to the Dinsmore water system and the $7,500 that we discussed earlier adds onto that project. And then for staff's turnover reduction, there's $20,000 for a labor consultant to start labor negotiations and develop strategies to support staff and encourage retention. And then related to SB 1383, the new administrative analyst position will increase the city's availability, ability to respond to the requirements of SB 1383 and do things like apply for the extension. And then we can go to the next slide. And basically, I just put the capital projects up here again in case anybody wanted to review them and look at them and had any questions. They do make up 24% of budget and it is, you know, impressive for the city of Riedel to be able to perform and get all these capital projects out the door. And I'm gonna drink a little water here for a second. And then I believe the next slide is questions and if anybody had any questions specifically related to capital projects, we could pop back there. And with that, basically the options today are to adopt the resolution for the budget or to provide additional direction and staff will come back at the next council meeting for adoption. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Cheryl. Very, very well done. Um, um, I will open it up to the council. Um, let me see, where's my list? Councilmember Woodall?
I went in and talked to Cheryl for the last meeting and, um, I had most of my questions answered and I just went into today and, um, talked a few things over with her. So I have no questions, but I wanna thank her and Kyle and all the staff for all the work that they put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie, uh, councilmember Carter?
Uh, no questions for me, just thank you and it looks, looks solid.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garnes. No questions, one comment and, uh, you know, investing 24% of our budget into capital projects is a huge step in the right direction after many years of, uh, not doing a whole lot to reinvest in the city. And, uh, I just, uh, thank the mayor and staff for their vision on cannabis and, uh, really what it's meant to the city as far as our ability to, um, have a capital program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
Just a minor question. Um, when, when you said on the, on the code enforcement that if something's abated, that it doesn't come out of the budget, where does, where does it show up that it came out of somewhere? Cuz we had to spend the money.
So I'm, I'm not muted, right?
You're not muted, no.
Okay, so basically because of the way accounting and for the balance sheet, it shows up as an accounts receivable because what it is, is it's a debt owed to the city. So when you make that expense, it, it actually creates a receivable. And part of what brought this to my attention was we actually got some money from a lien today, the like one from 19, or 2017. And it was kind of exciting to have actually gotten that money back and believe it or not, you get twice as much money when it takes that long for it to come back in the form of a lien. So if you, if you do the code enforcement and there's not a lien placed on the property, it comes out of the budget. But if you do the nuisance abatement process where you put a lien against the property, there's actually a special fund that is set up for that process and it doesn't come out of the budget. It creates a lien. Does that answer the question? I was gonna actually bring the item back possibly to talk about this some more after discussing it with the, um, city manager.
All right, well, that answered my question. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And, um, I have no questions. I think all my questions were answered. Um, I really appreciate everything staff's done. Um, you, I mean, you all, you really did a great job this year and it's really exciting, um, that we have money in our budget to be able to do those things like, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson said. It's, it's really an exciting moment, so yay. And, um, now I will see if there are any hands raised or any, um, emails.
Currently, there are no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Thank you. And so, um, is there a motion to accept and adopt, or rather, adopt the budget for fiscal year 2021, 22 and approve the resolution number 1490 dash 2021, adopting the fiscal year 2021, 22 operating and capital budget and position allocation table?
So moved by Johnson.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second by Carter. Oh, whoever.
We have a motion, two seconds, so roll call please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garnes?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Yay. And we'll move on to our public hearing on cost recovery for the abatement of 483 Fourth Avenue. City manager. That's page 121 in your packets.
And I will, uh, go ahead and turn this over to Chief Connor, who's on the line.
Good evening, Mayor Garnes, members of the city council. As has been discussed in the previous public meeting, on, uh, February 13th of 2019, a notice of violation was served on the owner of the property located at 483 Fourth Avenue, Jeannie Spear. There was some initial progress in cleaning up the trash located in her front yard, but that soon came to a stop and the amount of trash continued, uh, continued to increase. Two administrative citations were issued to her with, uh, again, minimal success. Consequently, on July 7th, 2020, a notice of nuisance in order to abate was served on Ms. Spear. Uh, there was no action in response to this document. Then on September 2nd, 2020, uh, Public Works cleaned up the property with the use of a backhoe and a 30-yard dumpster from recology. The cost of that abatement was determined to be $2,727.06. Ms. Spear was sent a bill for this amount, which she has not made, she has not paid, nor has she made in the attempt to, uh, prepare a payment in installments. Consequently, the, the police department is requesting that you approve the findings in order confirming accounts and assessment for the abatement that was done at 483 Fourth Avenue.
Thank you, um, Chief Connor. I'll open it up for questions, uh, to the council. Councilmember Wilson?
Well, I don't have any questions. I just would like to move ahead that we would, uh, adopt this. I don't know how to get people to respond responsibly.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we, oh, thank you, Frank. Um, Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Similar comments to Councilmember Wilson. You know, the people that don't wanna be responsible are going to be irresponsible and those that want to be responsible are gonna do responsible things. And unfortunately, we've got a couple of bad ones in, in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Carter?
I'm on board. Let's do it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Woodall?
Um, let's do it. She looks like she's well on her way to another one from my observations, so. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, it's, um, it makes me sad, but it seems to be the right thing to do, so. That's, uh, I think I don't have any questions behind it. Are there any hands raised or emails regarding this?
There are currently no hands raised.
And no emails.
Um, having none, then I will ask, is there a motion, uh, to approve? the findings in order confirming accounts and assessments for the abatement of 483 Fourth Avenue?
Still moved by Johnson?
Is there a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. The next item, there's no page number, but it is the Gateway Ad Hoc Committee Report. That's myself and Councilmember Woodall. Julie, did you want to say anything? Did you want me to?
Go ahead, Deborah.
We, we have, we looked at the gateway coming into the city. And what we would like to recommend is that we relocate the, the trees that, that are leaning. I have, I have no idea what, what the tree is called, but it, it just kind of just like flops over and it's kind of sad. And to relocate those and to replace them with adult trees, you know, same size as the blossoming cherries, so that we will have consistency and so that our gateway will be just look very inviting and very pretty when you come into town and you have all the, the trees blossoming. You know, we've all been over to Scotia when the dogwoods are going. You know, everybody's seen Washington DC with the cherries. It, it's really lovely when you can have a consistent look through the whole gateway. And so this is kind of almost like the kickoff to the beautification committee. But it is our recommendation that, that we replace those trees. We relocate them. We don't want to kill the trees. We relocate the one trees and replace them though with trees that are like the ones that are already there so that we have consistency. And so that's the recommendation to the council. And so now the council, we will ask you for your discussion and then hopefully you can, we can, we can move forward. So I will start. Yes.
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Well, we, we're just going to take out the leaners, right?
Right.
Strange tree. So, and we will, we'll put in new trees that are consistent with some of the, but they still won't all be consistent, but we're, we're headed in that direction, right?
That's what we're hoping. We're hoping to make it as close to all the same as possible.
Okay, because like in the, in the median, we have some really nice tall trees that are doing well.
Right.
Yeah, and up the other end, I would hate to take out the dogwood. I just. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, none of this more than the size of the streets, you know, with the leaning trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the, not the median. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. So I will call on Amanda. Councilmember Carter, sorry.
Either one works. Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea. I, I'd love to see things be a little bit more consistent and I like nothing more than when all those cherries blossoms bloom at once. I drive down the street every time and say, dang, look at our town. Yeah, the more the merrier.
All right. Councilmember Wilson?
Is, is this, is part of the problem of the depth of the, of the soil being shallow because of the, it used to be the highway?
Um, actually, that is not the problem. We're not talking about trees that are dying or dead. It just, they're just, they're just odd trees. I, I, I don't, I don't know how they were chosen, but they just are not consistent. That's why I was saying, when Councilmember Woodall and I were talking about it, we were, we were just trying to say, we can move those trees, relocate those trees because they aren't dying trees. They just aren't attractive to the city and they don't make this, they don't make our entryway look as, as nice as, as it could look and is inviting.
All right. Sounds reasonable. Thank you. One for you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim?
Sounds like a great plan. Let's do it.
And Councilmember, I asked, Councilmember Woodall?
In doing it, when we select trees, can we actually have maybe an arborist help us select some trees or take a look at how we should plant them and, and just maybe give us a little advice? Like some of our trees, well, especially the ones that really look bad, stakes were missing. They weren't staked right. And it's just when we, when we do it this time, I'd like to do it the right way. And if we could just maybe get a little help.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm good with that. I think, I think we all kind of are on the same page with that too as well. So are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently, no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Thank you. So city manager, is this, is this a vote or is this a consensus situation?
I think it's a consensus situation. What we'll do is we will bring back a item. What we'll do is we'll maybe meet with the ad hoc committee one more time just to, you know, make sure that we're clearly understanding the request and the specific trees. And then what we'll do is we'll put together a proposal and circulate it to, you know, professional landscapers to see who would be interested in the work. And then we'll bring that back to the council for, for council approval.
Thank you. Very much. So I think that brings that then to a close. And we will now move on to the introduction, first reading by title only of ordinance number 389-2021, amending chapter 2.55, Commissions, Boards, Agencies, and Tasks Forces, and section number 10.05.100, Traffic Committee of the Rio Del Municipal Code. Page 133 in your packet. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garance, members of the council. So back on May 4th, the Rio Del City Council adopted the goals and actions to achieve economic development in Rio Del, and that included the immediate action plan. The plan was developed by an ad hoc committee of Mayor Garance and Mayor Pro Tim Johnson in consultation with the state and with state and local experts. Key advice included a visioning process, was encouraged to become the city that businesses want to invest in. The need to improve upon and capitalize upon the community's natural beauty became an important element of that plan. So the council's been working towards increased code enforcement, nuisance abatement in order to clean up trash and improve conditions. However, an ad hoc committee, or excuse me, a committee was, was identified, or the ad hoc committee itself identified a need to create a full committee and involve community members to develop and plan specific projects towards the creation of beautification and improved walkability. The committee would ultimately seek to increase civic pride and a positive sense of place for members of, of the, of the city of Rio Del, for the community, for investors. So attached to your packet is attract changes of the proposed revisions to the chapter of the Rio Del Municipal Code. In addition, we have a draft ordinance number 389-2021 for the council's consideration. So there's no action for tonight's meeting other than to give further direction to staff, if there is any. And ultimately, after opening the public hearing, where the council should receive public input and deliberate on this, you would ultimately be continuing the reading of the ordinance to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, which is on June 15th, for a second reading and possible adoption of, of the ordinance. So with that, again, on page, I'll just, on page 137, you'll see the full text of the, of the proposed committee language. So entitled, "The Beautification, Walkability, and Pride Committee" is made up of two members of the city council selected annually, three members of the public who shall serve two-year terms. The committee shall annually provide a report to the city council with specific recommendations for projects that enhance the visual aesthetic and wayfaring quality of Rio Del public spaces or view sheds in order to produce a greater sense of community pride. The committee shall issue an annual report prior to March 31st for staff review and council consideration for inclusion during the annual budget. The committee shall meet once bi-monthly and shall be staffed by the city clerk or other designee and the city manager. So essentially, what we're looking for is a beautification and walkability committee that would do kind of a more similar to the very, our last agenda item with outlining specific projects that, that the committee believes would be of a benefit to the, to the community. So with that, I'll return it back to the mayor for additional comment.
Thank you. City manager, so before I ask for questions, I just want to make sure, like, so there's no appointing the ad hoc committee tonight, it's just a matter of accepting this and moving it on to the second reading?
Correct. So what will, what the timeline for this is, assuming that the council moves to the second reading and adoption on June 15th, it takes about 30 days. It takes 30 days for any ordinance to come into effect. So that would be sometime in mid-July. And, and then from there, we would be able to make appointments to the committee.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Woodall?
Great idea. I'm for it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson?
I agree with Councilmember Woodall. It's a good idea.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
I, I agree with the other speakers. Let's move forward.
Thank you. And Councilmember Carter?
Such an exciting idea. I'm just thinking of how we're gonna like draw straws over Zoom to figure out who gets to be on this committee. So I think we're all excited about it and that just music to my ears. It makes me so happy. So, yes.
Yay. All right. Well, and I'm, I'm all for moving forward as well. So I have no questions. And so do we need to take a vote on this first reading? Yes.
Comment, Mayor Garance?
Yeah, you open it for a public comment and then, and then we will need it, we will need a motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Are there any hands raised or emails?
Currently, no hands raised.
And there are no emails.
Thank you. And so then I will ask for a motion to accept the first introduction and first reading of ordinance number 389-2021.
Don't move, Mr. Carter.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? And we have a motion. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Woodall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Garance?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone. This is exciting. Now we'll move on to council reports. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Garance. I, I have two items. The first is, I want to shout out a great thank you to Nick and others that were decorating the city for Memorial Day. It looked really festive and honored those that served in the military. And the second is a question, does staff have any idea when we will be back into chamber for our meeting?
So right now, we are trying to set up the council chambers to facilitate that. There's a strong possibility that, that an opportunity will be present potentially on the, on the 15th.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes. What it's, it's probably worth noting for, from RCA, they, we deliberated overall sending a letter to the state legislature. There's a bill out there called AB 1139. And if you read through it, it doesn't really give you the picture of what's going on here. But what's going on is they have determined that in the state of California, people that have rooftop solar are taking advantage of the lower income population of the state. Therefore, it's important that we raise the rates of the people that have put solar on their roof for the power that they do use, that they pay more electricity, pay more for that electricity that they consume when they're not, when the sun, you know, the light, when the sun's out. In addition to that, it was also important that, according to whoever drafted this bill, is that anyone installing solar on your roof, pay prevailing wage for the installation of the solar panel, which isn't typical of a private individual to be paying a prevailing wage for construction done in California. So the, you might want to, in addition, the RCA voted unanimously to write a letter opposing it, but on all of the voting, it's pretty, it's pretty much going to go through. There's nobody, the numbers are way overwhelming, 20 to four different things on one's voting in committee. So if you feel like writing a letter, that's one worth writing. It does, it does an awful lot to discourage the cost of putting solar on your, on your rooftop, which in turn lowers climate change and it makes America more, you know, people green for the people that can't afford it as well as those that can afford it. So it's, it's, in a polite way, it's probably one of the most asinine bills that I've ever heard of. That's counterproductive to the environment. So that's all I had to report.
Thank you. I agree with your assessment. Councilmember Woodall?
Nothing, except I wanted to thank Frank for that update because that's very interesting. Thank you, Frank.
Definitely. Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
I also thought that was really interesting, Frank, and furiously scribbled everything you said. I appreciate it. I have no reports because my meeting, my red act meeting was canceled yesterday because of the holiday. So I got my Monday off.
Nice. And I, I'll actually bring that up to our, our Cal Cities person, Sarah Sanders, and, and see of Cal Cities, what, what they're doing about that. That sounds like something we should all be asking for letters to write about, Frank. So thanks for bringing that up. I too thank. And then put on my mayor hat because I took it off to thank Nick and the chamber and all of the volunteers for the Memorial Day. Now I'll put it back on and say thank you, Nick, and, and all of the volunteers who helped to make the city look so good on Memorial Day weekend. I had our Cal Cities Division, Redwood Empire Division meeting was on Friday and it was a good meeting. Senator, Senator McGuire was present and Congressman Huffman. And they were very open to our questions. They answered questions for us. They, and I talked to, I brought up our water project that we have on our shovel-ready projects that are here waiting to be done. uh, done, waiting to be undertaken. Um, and with um, Senator McGuire and um, you know, I thanked him for helping us with the wells from um, the, the rehab of the wells over in the business park and uh, let him know that that was very helpful as far as uh, getting us prepared for this drought, but that we are still junior water rights holders and so we don't have a lot of control over things. So that if we could just get these, some of these projects that are shovel-ready off the ground, um, it, it, and you know, they can help us, that would be really great. Well, I don't know if they can help us, but I know that he immediately had his staff person that day give me a call, which then I forwarded to Kyle and um, they are scheduling. So hopefully we will actually, it looks like we will at some point in relatively near future, have a meeting with Senator McGuire and um, um, Assemblyman Wood to talk about these things and see if there's anything that they can do to help us um, move, move it forward. Um, so that's um, pretty much my report and um, I guess I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved by Johnson?
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. So, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. See you in a couple of weeks. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Bye now.